Go ahead and call meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the New City website. The first item is the New City website. And y'all remember, a few months ago, we did a one-year extension to our current website. They plan to go up to over 12,000 a year. And so I've taken, told you all then, I would take this time to review and study for a alternative. And we've got a couple of other alternatives in here in addition to our old one to compare. And the, uh, of these three, they're the top three ones that, um, Acta G is the one that I've chosen to ask to go with. And there's a number of reasons for that, but right now, we do have the representative from Acta G here. If you'd like to step up to the microphone and turn to, push the button, make it green.
It's already green.
And this is Kaylee Hartain, and she's the representative from Acta G.
Hi, thank you so much for having me this evening. Uh, yes, I provided everyone with handouts for just kind of our scope and what we do when we work with municipalities. Uh, we are a Little Rock-based company. That's where we started, whenever we began our company around 11 years ago at this point. And I personally have worked with over 100 municipalities across the US. And so any chance I get to work with Arkansas cities and towns, it's my favorite thing to do, and I really appreciate it. Uh, so I personally have worked with the city of Springdale, West Fork, Carmina, Sherwood, and a couple others. Just, I don't know if I'll talk on my brain, but I know Randy and I have had many conversations about how do we make the website easier to navigate for residents? And how do we make it easier to navigate for your team? And they've worked with smaller cities. I know that not everyone can be dedicated to pushing out community updates and updating the website. And so with the backend that we've built, we've been able to kind of make that as streamlined as humanly possible. Pushing out to not only the website, but a mobile app that will build out that residents can download and keep up with live updates, um, council agendas, events that are going on, all that kind of good stuff. It's right there in their pocket with their smartphone that majority of people have these days. So that's kind of my spiel. I won't go through every single page with you, but I provided it there for you. And yeah, would love the opportunity to represent Cape Springs and also have Cape Springs represent Acta G, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do y'all have any more questions or?
Okay. Questions?
The reason I'm asking for Acta G, they're not the cheapest, but they're not the most expensive. Acta G is local, uh, and I say local, they're an Arkansas company. And as you can see, she's here to visit with us today. The one that is a little less expensive is also headquartered in Michigan. They've only got two cities in Northwest Arkansas, both of which recently went to them. And looking at the sites, I just don't, I don't like the quality that I saw there as well. Plus, in the, if you do need someone or need service, it's good to have someone close by. And if you look at Springdale's and the other two cities are Centerton and Belvesta that's on the other one. Springdale is on theirs, and I'm not sure about the other cities in this area. But I know the other, the big four are all on, uh, on Civic Plus like we were. And, uh, so I thought there was a significant, uh, the one at, uh, Springdale looks significantly nicer. And in addition to that, their app is, is part of the, of the overall package. And the other company will sell you apps, but they're not, they started out doing apps. And a lot of theirs is, uh, Acta G's is designed to go with their, uh, website. The other company, you can buy apps and, uh, they will determine and build what they, what you need with apps. Uh, theirs through their app has the push capabilities, so we wouldn't have to do the emergency civic ready bill anymore. And when you look at what it's currently costing us through Civic Plus, they would actually save us about 1,400 a year going with Acta G. So that's the reason I leaned that direction, that you've got the information in your guidance there. And that's kind of what we'll be bringing at the next council meeting.
We don't have to have an app to access this?
No, you can do it from your computer, but for those people who, uh, aren't at home and on the computer much, that have other sources of information. When you have an app as opposed to just loading the website on your phone, it's designed more to fit the phone and for easy use with the phone, and so it works better.
It's okay. Uh, I, listen, I, everything I do is on my phone, and I recently deleted Facebook on my phone completely. And so I wasn't getting city news or updates on anyone's lives or anything like that. And so I was lucky that North Little Rock, they went through us to build out their app. And so now I can know about road closures and events that are going on ahead. I wouldn't have to drive through town every day, so, yeah.
So the first 400 pages is zero cost, but after that, how much is?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The first four, sorry. The first 400 pages is at zero cost for migration. Now how much is it after the first 400 pages or more than 400 dollars?
So on the last video, the handout that I provided, our annual cost per year is 5,900. And then the settlement development's 2,900. And at renewal, there's a typical 1% to 5% increase here every year.
The 400 pages are webpages. There are not documents like we may store on there that people can.
Well, I said 400 pages, that's dollars.
Okay. He's asking about what's it cost after 400 pages?
We, you can have an unlimited amount of pages on our website or that we house and documents. So, yeah, we don't have a limit on there. Of course. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, again, appreciate the time. I drove up here from Little Rock this afternoon and I'm about to make the trip back home. So I really appreciate your time this evening, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to shift a little bit from the agenda because, uh, we've got one council member that should be here in about 15 or 20 minutes, and she wants to hear her planning information. So, uh, the next item that I'm going to go to is the, uh, oh, I don't know, it is the, uh, item for the franchise fees. And the first one, and dates will be very similar, but the first one is Black Hills Energy. And, uh, in your packet, there are examples of the actual, uh, resolutions, I mean ordinances. And, uh, I don't know. The first one is, it tells right in the second line near the left, it's for Black Hills Energy. And these are our franchise fees are determined and set up based on the use of our right of ways and needs. For the particular, usually it's a utility company. And for this maintenance and repair and setting up the processes and everything, this is usually done with any city with a franchise agreements. And that these, uh, remember, do you know how yours was?
It was pretty old. I think in the 80s, and it's been a little business owner there. A lot of them were going back to Arkansas Western Gas days.
Right.
It's a little unusual, but Arkansas, their franchise permits are purposeful, so it was, um, pretty old.
Right, until you change it, it stays the same. And there, and that can get pretty old in Acta G. Yes, she's with Black Hills, and you'd like to introduce yourself to the group. She saw this on the agenda and, and is today. Maybe you have anything you might want to tell them?
Good evening, I'm Robin Mazel of Black Hills Energy. I work out of Fayetteville, but serve all of Arkansas and live pretty close to here. Uh, we worked with Justin, who are turning on this, so appreciate the opportunity to review it. And we didn't have any changes. Uh, we had worked with him over the past year in Tommy Town, so, uh, template draft that you have was almost identical to what that we had worked with him on Tommy Town. Um, you know, we don't love it when communities increase their franchise fees because it goes back to your residents or customers. And so, uh, Justin indicated that you're discussing starting this January 1. And, uh, we would put a message to the Cape Springs residents, um, reach out to go transfer your ballots and if they have questions to, to call, send a call. So, um, that's kind of how that, that works. It's pass the mail to customers.
You guys have a fair description that I gave?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, yeah. Right away, it's my work.
And I know that we've got one, not them, uh, we've got one provider that was trained to write in someone else's. And they have come in and not followed our guidelines because they didn't have a franchise or didn't know what they were. And they actually poured a couple of streets without vermin before we called them and got them stopped. And when they did one of them, they did it too shallow, so there's a ridge for us to grow them out. And that's being addressed, but it's, uh, that's, that's part of the reason as well because there are rules and guidelines set up in here that they can then know what's expected of them. And, uh, they don't have an excuse if they're out doing this thing.
Should just not say about 400,000 dollars.
And where? And stroke, uh, that's the, yeah, you should work on the first franchise, first franchise. That's Black. And I'll make that note, so we can get that edited. But we did.
The one that, that is not the one in history?
No, and they are going to be getting one. But it's not, it's pretty, yeah. And I will say, and, uh, that the electric company and the, um, yeah, that both of these electric companies will be, it's for the same reasons, the same speech that was just given applies to all of them, once just the, uh, gas company, the others are electric companies. They all use our right of ways and needs, they all order roads. And there's, I know one of the funds happening, and they'll be coming later, makes the concerted, uh, intentional effort with their lines and right of ways rather than getting easements. Because roads aren't expanded that often, and they rarely have to move them. But what they do, that's still adding costs that they expect for getting by cheaper most of the time. And that's the way their management is wondering. So, but they do follow the rules and they do order roads and do the things they're supposed. So those three, that's kind of the, any questions over those? Now, we will take a step back to the planning. And, uh, we'll have David Burney explaining.
Good evening. You have a line on the system?
Yes.
What is your computer, I need to sort it out, wait here. Got there, it's here for a quarter of a week. Is that the microphone? You want to have some, uh, question about that? Marks by the angle is zero five, one zero zero, three six, six zero zero. This is a request for variance of law, and it's still allowed for letter subdivision, they have a street activity. And if you want a commission, go to the MSW. The MSW's will approve this variance request on the condition that the property goes through the reselling process with the council.
So what kind of variance do they ask for?
Lot dimensions, the biggest thing is their depth because of the layout that they're, because of the shape of lots now along. If they didn't get the depth of variance request, essentially the heaps more than, street without the capability of adding homes on either side. So they just, like a road with, with all the homes on one side, they'd think it's kind of a piece of wall. My computer is about the same as we have, you know, so it's, it's yours out. The other item is the Clarity Flat Controlling Subdivision. This was properly located adjacent to where our operating center is, or so I believe on these.
David, can I hold you up for one second on this one? I guess I thought you were pulling something on, um, I am concerned about this one.
Okay.
Um, you could say that on the other side of the road, I ran over, you know, we approved that. But then we have Ridgeway and then this new one going up on the other side. This side, you have Grantwick, Hillcrest, down the road, on Brown, you have that one. We got rezoned, um, for smaller lots. And you put all this red and orange again, and you can say yes, we'll plan for it. But I saw it happen in Hillcrest, and it wasn't done well. Um, so that is very much my concern about putting more homes in the area. There's feedback here, so, um, that is my concern, putting more homes in that area. Because, I'm going to say, the density is already, that area, just Grantwick, Hillcrest, that area is already the most residential dense, as we've talked about before in previous planning, um, or anything council needs. So I am apprehensive about resuming this to an R group. Because we, we don't even have Hillcrest built up yet, and we solve the problems with drainage that Hillcrest had. So I just wanted to express that.
Do you love that, Jess, and how much setback do you ask?
The setbacks would be standard setbacks. Yeah, they're the density per acre, they're not asking for a higher density per acre. So like, they're going to be, kind of like what you're saying, the city works out the number of homes. The number of homes won't exceed the four lots per acre, the lot three and five. They've, uh, looked at getting a building insurance with the city attorney and five, I would say, as such. So.
So what kind of variance do you ask?
It's, it's the depth, the depth of the lot is whole. So like the R3, um, lot depth, if they shrink that a little bit on all the lots.
That's not, you don't want to ask, you don't want to make.
Yeah, I didn't bring that specifically.
There, here.
Okay. I mean, if the applicants want to speak to it, you know, I mean, because y'all will be looking at rezoning later. We, we talked about, I mean, this is the variance for planning, there's something about, uh, how, what, the, the, the reason.
Because that's 100 homes, then, correct? If you're looking at about 100 homes, you said four per acre, and it's 2.5, or 25.55 acres. So that's 100 extra homes going in with Grantwick that are best home homes. And Hillcrest that has, I want to say 125, Grantwick has more than that, and then you have 100 homes.
Do you know the number of lots that's projected to the future?
Yes, sir. Taylor Lynn with Craft and Tolan Associates. Right now, our current concept has 90 lots. Um, R3 zoning is allowed for the future land use map in this area. We originally were trying to request R4, which matched Hillcrest, Hillcrest is R4. Uh, but then pulled back that request, so that R3 can match the current future land use map. The depth variance that we requested is approximately 12 feet on three or four of the rows of homes. And, and to, uh, David's point, it's the width of the existing lot doesn't allow for an equal number of rows of homes. So you have, you have one row of homes that have a street on either side, uh, if we don't get that lot, lot of variance, uh, which doesn't work very well. So that was the reason for the, the variance in the, like, which is a third of it. But I can answer any questions, y'all?
But David, this is for, um, the variance as well as the R3, correct? For the next session?
No, this is on the, the resum.
Summary of calls, so, in one to R3.
Well, I mean, it's conditional on the resum. Like, it can't happen unless it's resum. Yes, that we're not making a determination on variance at all.
Yeah, you're probably strictly on the, you saw, right?
That's it, perfect, thank you.
Uh, the low area is on the west side of the site, so kind of southwest corner, more or less. Uh, the west side of the site, or the, there's kind of a, a low area that works its way further west from there.
So when the water flows, it goes over all the, or you probably, that, right?
It would go in the current path that the water is flowing today, yes.
Are there homes on the other side of that that could be affected by that water?
We're not adjacent to any existing subdivisions immediately. I think a couple of parcels over, if it's in.
Now we just break them home, is, is, there's no, is?
It's in Calm Asher, right?
Yes.
How much is that?
I mean, there's, there's things to tell, but there may be subdivisions in the future. But if they are, they will equally there, and I'll be working with them.
Will be required to design the detention to meet the drainage requirement. Anything more? Sorry, this is not going for now. Yeah, so the Clarity Flat Controlling Subdivision, um, this is the one that's been going on for a while. The applicant had a question, they know this, based on some work they've done, they're all signed to Jolly's. So at this point, uh, we're just kind of waiting here and seeing through, something like that. Uh, there was the rezoning for Barrel Theresa Bush. This is the same property, 579 Ford Lane, um, the planning commission, both unanimously to a part of the resum request. And then some of y'all, which was your work here this month, what we discussed. And of course, we have the FW and NSP's maps. Um, we've got a new set of maps, been delivered to y'all in this packet. The planning commission voted unanimously to a part of these with conditions, some changes provided at that meeting. They've reflected and sent out, and that's what I can't wait this time. And, uh, so city council lot, and those all rezoned, we just discussed. If there's, you know, any other process to add on that, you know, we can.
Was this Mr. Phone, is that, is it, is that you?
Sorry. Who's the engineer here, or the, or? I'm the engineer, correct, representing the, the rezoning board.
Okay, I just want to be sure, because it's two different groups of people on the same property. You develop, have they over?
Yes, right, yes.
Current property?
Yes, yes, so current property, and there's the rest of the rezoning, and, okay, great. Um, do you have a lot of this, you know, we've been working on a couple of different projects. Uh, the, um, brother, we submitted in conjunction with the one for Watership, the Lexi project, the major scene you guys spoke about in the last meeting. That was one of the projects that was accepted for the SCAM conference. So, um, we've had a meeting with the Watership, the maker of Madison Mountain. And we're kind of going for the next steps and forward. And I would want to throw that out, so we'll probably, we'll work on that going forward. And then the bigger thing is the downtown master plan, I think it was, was the AKA one in here, at the Newell State Conference in St. Louis, back at the, uh, back in September, I believe, was the first thing, but, but the, that's the Arkansas Plan Association's track through the American Student Association. They had conferences each year last year, they have the state conference this year, was a Newell State Conference with Arkansas Missouri and who were, just had that conference. So it's just kind of the recognition of the work we've done in downtown master plan and, um, all that, all that we did to, to plan for the future of it, so.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When these subdivisions are developed, was the city made local experience?
We, we take this, uh, street dedication and, uh, we don't make the drainage, uh, attention line dedications, but we take streetlights and streets. And streetlights are only if they use the lights that are maintained by the power company.
So if the, something happens with the streets, would they, uh, be able to, whatever, what's the meaning there?
Yeah, after the, uh, party period.
That brings up a lot of, yeah.
Yeah, we've got some things to cover there, yes, some, some special. So, but that's just the brief commercial. I'll have it all together, yeah. Okay.
I do, I do have one more question. Did you verify, oh, that the Calmaster, whoever examined, they were contacted with, um, the resale request? Or the public hearing, they called those people that own that land, and no, there's no home there. They weren't present, I mean, I don't know if that's correct.
They all showed that, said, I wonder if it went into 202, or 202. We put the signs out, we found the signs, and I don't, we all, it's.
Yes, okay. Well, I just wondered, did you tell Master, because there's no resident there, you said?
No, we didn't, they had, they're, they're holidays, and they still descend there.
Okay, that's okay, thank you.
You stood up, available?
The applicants, yes.
On the, it's just.
Yes. Usually we give the green tags, or the. Usually we give the green tags, or the five, that all accept, you know, you know, they, sometimes they scan and send it to us. You know, lots of others, sometimes again, but yes.
Thank you. And then the next item is the map itself, the yellow.
I mean, we, this isn't working, obviously, so unfortunately, we can go over some of the proposed changes and the rebate and the recent planning condition. As far as all the new changes from the map, which all the names, this is all, um, there's just a, kind of that south, uh, east area that we're, recorded changes took place. I think other than, and you can see those on the maps that I have in front of you, and the various, but the map on there. I think one of the only changes that we made in, how south, this southeast area, was, um, along the Lillard Lane, we had a collector's reason showing that the Lillard and then shot up to Stalkings, we took that out entirely.
Um, do you have a summary of all the changes?
Yes, it's, it should be, like, where these maps are running, looks like this, a summary of.
It's, it looks like this.
Should be right in front of you with maps. So this summary is a summary of changes from the very, like, what is, what is on the maps is just a summary of changes from the previous map that was here. You know, it was already, uh, passed on for the planning. So southwest corridor, um, you can see, should we start with number two? Well, you, you're the one page, let's start with that, because number one, you can see, of course, as they add the post, negative collector connection up on Sand Road. This is, this is realignment of sands to make it more reversible, you know, in the future, if that property develops, there's been some discussions about development in that area. So we wanted to show a better road connection point, actually going through that subdivision, and actually being a collector, like, we kind of envision sands in the future. And just move to the next one, you go to number two. And there is an area that was neighbor residential, kind of between, uh, Mole and just Johnson. And the commission wanted to extend that transitional excuse corridor, but it's in that kind of downtown core, continually works well along the highways. Just up along those, uh, fronts of those properties on, uh, Lowell Avenue slash three sixty-four. Uh, a lot of those properties are either homes that you say are old or existing homes, and some that you can easily see transitioning into, you know, a mix of commercial residential things like that. Uh, number three, it's right behind that, changed that area to neighbor residential, NR. It was, um, just residential meeting this and the board. So where that NR was existing to the west, it extended from the park on the down Johnson to Plank. Uh, number four was.
Is it now already residential?
It is, it is, yes. Just, you know, it redeveloped, or someone was looking to buy some things and change something there. Well, it was residential meeting this, so, uh, more like a subdivision, you know, basic block size residential. This is the neighbor residential, it's more traditional downtown, you know, maybe a basic different, um, housing type. So before was, we changed the area to public institution, this cemetery, cemetery was previously under Ori, obviously, just went and changed it to PI Public Institution. And then we added a collector from Johnson to two sixty-four, adjacent to the park right there. Uh, the only collector, the only street, you know, running between those two is that third street. And this property, we were up there and tried to get some out, you know, on the way. So this collector was having right there, makes sense if people wanting to get to the park, things like that, that, you know, in the future, the city, you know, wanted to put revenue or something on the bill. You know, we can get that, uh, right on that, you know, look at, put in that, actually, north south connection there.
Is the parking, is the parking being owned?
Yes, yes. Yeah, the, the park is the, the bridge where that parking right there is.
So this is a future land use map, right?
Yes, sir.
So. I always think the future would be a little farther out. But if somebody wants to come in and do something to property or anything, you're gonna use this map, right?
Yes.
So it's not really a future land use map, it's current.
What's up with the, yes, yeah. It's what you project happening in that area in the future, you know, asking, you know, to ask for things. You know, to guide development, resoning requests.
It's kind of like the time we used a, a park and as recreation for camper back a few years ago, down in the trailers. That's what the planning mission said, and that the use, current land use map is part of a park and recreation. But it was to put trailer camper to extend the camel sites, trailer sites. So you can really do whatever you want with this, right?
Well, that's the main reason.
Trailer parts. Now, so it can be changed again, just really build.
Well, the map's, yes. The map's gonna be changed, but like, referencing the trailer park, the R B apartment.
Did what you said?
I said, it's like, this is a policy, it's a plan, it's a policy. Everything can be changed, like our laws and our resolutions, everything young people can be changed.
Well, we didn't change that before, but we used it anyway, so.
And these, yeah, and we've, and it's been made, uh, several times, these are not only, they're not laws, they are a guideline, they're a plan. It's a twenty-year plan, the original one was for twenty forty. Uh, some of these roads ain't there, and they're not gonna be there, and they may never be there, but it, it's what we envision it could do over the next twenty years.
You all are able to use it as a resource, the day I do adopt it, like the mayor says, you can use it as a resource to help make your decisions on zoning, um, applications that come your way. And the planning commission can use it on zoning recommendations and development requests, that, that sort of thing. Um, so that, once it's adopted and on to the future.
And the street connections, you know, see a street connection that's needed in the future, and we require that road to be adopted or to be built out to the standard that we had classified as.
Just a, a quick little, uh, background, the time, timeline, just looking back towards the summer, this, this summer. Um, I did want to just mention, um, back on July twenty-one, that's when the planning commission first recommended the earlier curation of the map. Um, and then you all looked at it in July and August. Um, and then on August twenty-sixth, that's when you sent it back to the planning commission. Um, and I think it was great that you did, um, I think that they had, they did not kick out from the lightly, they, they looked at it, um, uh, over the next couple of meetings, um, and then, you know, discussed it on the fifteenth of September. And then as well on October sixth, um, which results in the, the number guidance that are on those exhibits.
Would this also be a guide where we're not giving an, that's any PZD requests?
This won't affect PZD requests, it's more the zoning code. So the zoning code is going to affect PZD requests. Once we actually put in place these zones and allow for some of these, uh, different, like, mixed uses, things like that, like, that'll, that'll solve that.
This, this map though, can help the city use more, I think, whenever you are ready to update zoning, I think this can help you update zoning in a, in a more efficient, I, I think quicker way than we've seen the FLU, um, progress, cause you can look at this for guidance. Instead of thinking about every color of the rainbow, you can truly think what are the particulars, I mean, you know, districts that might be appropriate for these areas.
So looking at number six, um, there's a proposed neighborhood collector that is drawn in on the western side of the, uh, map and the city's limits. This goes over to Brown Road, who's kind of around the river, off pretty enough to guard out money. Uh, this was something the planning commission was really, when we were looking at it, they tried to alleviate a little bit of east-west and the north-south connectivity, there was something like that to be done. So, um, number seven was, we had a area that where we had extended some of the balloon and were transitioned down. And it was actually changed and pushed back up to where it was at previously, on the system, back to the current cabinet. So it's essentially no change, but we had proposed to drop it down and then took it, kind of scaled it back and then put the residential meeting this, kind of to build something, uh, future land use, you know, uh, type of order.
One question, and that is that is proposed for that A, A one to R three, that we're looking at, vote on, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
So that would be that full red square would be the R three?
Uh, it's not all that, no, it's just the, uh, top right-hand corner is what it is.
That, that would be R three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, number eight was, there was a proposed negative collector, there was a proposed negative collector running from Plank to Ford, um, on the previous map that brought the real, was discussion of whether or not we wanted to take that off, let that be something that we're just rebuilding with local streets. But local streets still do have a lot of homes and none of them, things like that. And it was kind of determined that we best keep that as collector, if we ever did want to get an actual east-west connection between Plank and Ford. Something that they could go on in the round, so that was left as a collector. But there was a north-south collector drawn in, um, from Brown to East Hole slash two sixty-four. So that's the one you see running from Brown, goes up adjacent to the green residential states, kind of talks over onto the backside of, well, we're just discussing the resoning, and then it goes along property lines up to Highway two sixty-four.
So is that not in the peak area there off of East Hole, that collector coming down? If box plant east of the, uh, box of them?
Uh, yes, sir, it's, it's pretty significant, the twenty-five six is, it's four or five of the property east. So there.
Where the woods is?
It is woods, it's got the other, and they're right on there. The other, uh, change that was looked at, that we felt was something that was a recent, that was good change, we hadn't, I don't think that we looked at before, was a proposed neighborhood collector connection, um, called Mount the Ring Line, where Fields Lane comes up and ties into East Brown Road. There was discussion of, you know, the future, can waters not take fields, bring it over in line with Ford? And we're making, uh, you know, kind of another intersection, actually, was a line was on. So that was a new one that was changed, and then the Fields Lane, road itself was changed to a neighborhood collector. I don't think you ever apply it to something on your level, but it's more, there's definitely potential that it's going to be utilized, it's going to be able to go south to get to White and Ford, and shoot over to one twelve, you know, where it may be, shoot, they might use the highway, you know, taking that with one oak here to do any new intersection.
You anticipate that would happen, you'd send it to a lane to put in these collectors?
Do I anticipate happening, what?
Imminent domain to put in these collectors? If you're seeing it in some manner?
The, uh, it's not the city, you know, but your hope is that most of this happens on the boat. If you want to have these in, where there's ever brought these hole, and it develops, you're guiding, working, working this together. And, you know, they're not established, so, you know, you're looking at as far as, you know, if a topography is just like the metro area, they won't shift it, and someone still wanted to display for it. You know, that, that's something that typically the cities are able to, important. Um, a, you know, better example of that would be one on Sand Road where it moves through, instead of taking the two dog, kind of, nine degree collectors. You know, if that was to develop, you know, then we could potentially direct it through there. But I don't think it's something that the city's looking at for any, I would say that if something was done in the domain, we'd be trying to upgrade the street, we felt like we needed to widen it. You know, we were having to work with the property, we're trying to alleviate, you know, a width in something. But that's not intended, and intended, the reason why they're usually drawn where they are, is to not do that.
And you're not in half step, or you want to at least get your pride ways in. Prime example of how we try to do that, and it goes back to when I was on planning and on council. Uh, Rambo Road, where that dog leg used to be with the, uh, subdivisions, that was created because Rogers required with certain density that you do a turn lane and a off, on the off-site, uh, development with the subdivision, that you do the turn lane and the adjacent lane. And the subdivision there met their requirements, the one that was in Rogers. They upgraded two-thirds of the road and left the dirt road with the bridges. It used to be a county road with a wooden bridge, so everyone used that middle lane, the turn lane as the northbound lane until development came on our side. And now with the development of the property and, uh, north of it, it will now be full three lanes in a line of the road on the other end. So a lot of that's done with development and through development to accommodate for the additional needs. That's the ideal way to do it.
Ideal?
Yeah, and that's what we've done in the past, we haven't went out and done imminent domain for roads and things that, I mean, the only time that I know we've used it in recent years was where there was one gap somewhere in a waterline or sewer line throughout that. And other than that, which we try not to, we try not to in most cases.
Just curious, I'm not a person.
Any other questions?
God, I think they'll try to reach out to see if they can help us. What's the service problem?
So, it looks like it didn't change quite. And this, when you break like maps, this is really vulnerable. Instead of one huge thing like this where we can walk through and go to that one and leave it. So I really do appreciate that that was put in to, to make this more readable as opposed to putting that and putting it on paper like this. So, um, so that's what I'd like to see, okay, like this, I guess.
I will say that that is my fault. I do that one for your ordinance, but that's not meant to be your example to go through that one.
But you don't know the entail of this, so that's why I have a handy record. Um, and so that way if anybody, the residents want to see it, it's clearly drawn out. If you pay attention to the arrows for the dummy and have a summary of everything, this is the most detailed we've ever had it come to us. So I'm glad we did that. So it turned out good, thank you.
Michael?
Next item on the agenda, the resolution twenty twenty-five, that's fifty-two from the last meeting. There has been some confusion, how many folks have heard, for the most part, weren't confused, but I think a little back road, they heard it. But ultimately there was a recording that only one of them had heard from Mark on the vote panel. And then there was another recording that you couldn't really make out who it was, but you could hear about three different voices. So for the sake of clearing up any confusion, I'm going to ask Bill to state how you voted on this last week. And, or a couple of weeks ago. And this is the actual budget amendment where we didn't make much change, but we did uh discuss a little bit and then we went to a vote. So just for the sake of clearing up how you voted, then we start with Mark and just mention how you voted.
May I take that? Because I understand this is a work session, but that was a minutes roll-up session, so it's made in two years. It needs to be done at a council meeting.
It was, it was? Okay.
So when they, when they do their, their statements that uh you voted, how you voted, that's all right. But it doesn't need to be done at a meeting to where it can be put down and known again at council meetings.
Well, we're not voting, we have to do something that was existing.
I understand, I understand that, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying why it needs to be done at a council meeting.
Yeah, I, I think it is, maybe just that the council meeting for the minutes come out. The council can talk about that title or their vote exactly, reflected or not, and then they could.
And then, and then.
Change it.
That's, that's all.
And, and, and I did send the, know how to everybody, um, on that, uh, it, it, we just want to talk about it because for they did vote, but I think we can just handle what happened.
That'll work. Next item, we, while you were out, we jumped ahead and got the franchise stuff taken care of. So the next item is the ordinance to read on. Did you address that adequately in your report or do you need additional?
I'm not voting for that, we have a question, so I can hear.
If there's no additional questions, then the next item is the, uh, special call meeting. And if you would, would need to, I don't guess we even need to suspend work session if this completed the work session unless someone has comments to make or anything like that.
Hey, we can talk about franchise.
We already, whatever I mentioned, we did that before you guys.
Can I make one, I have to, I'm sorry, right, uh, after that, uh, we have a number of the franchise ordinances, the plan is to, uh, have those go into effect. The plan is to have those go into effect on December first, you know, on January first, uh, to start the year with rolling rates. Uh, so we have in the, in the package, we have, uh, Swenco, uh, Light Hills, uh, Carol, um, and Carol Lunder. And there's one that I have been sitting with now because earlier today I had a phone conference with Bright speaking, uh, which is an internet company. And, uh, I've been going back and forth quite a little bit, they have a form or things that they use nationwide. Uh, and, uh, I had some changes, uh, maybe kind of a number of folks, they agreed all the changes. So, uh, I have that one to add as well. It's slightly, it's a little bit different for it, looks a little different. Uh, but it's, it's the same, uh, it's the same terms, terms of me to you are there or are, are there. So I'll just send that one to you by, uh, by email, but that will be included, it's attached to call earlier, earlier today. So I want to make that, make that point, and I'll send that to you. If there's any questions about it, let me know, but we thought, I, I have verified, I think, like, you know, the people who do this, January one, everybody said yes. So the plan will be, uh, after the October being, uh, I'll send sign copy of the franchise ordinances to all the different, uh, uh, folks. And tell them that they're ready for, uh, January one, and if they don't agree, so.
Anything else? Do I have any motion to adjourn the work session and to open the special meeting? No motion by, I'm gonna hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. So we did close our work session, we are now opening the special call meeting, roll call.
What?
Here.
Here, I'm here. JJ is out, Jared is out, Monty. And it's you.
Okay. And the first item on the agenda for the call meeting is the, uh, resolution offer us the payment for blueback IRS effects. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
No motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Erica, motion by aye. Is there any discussion?
I just want to know what is this forecast and so what is it?
This will, this tells up in the right quarter, it's for March of twenty twenty-four, it's the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. It's not actually for March, it's for the first quarter.
I think the fact that I looked at all the payments that was made in twenty twenty-four, because I have had some of the confirmation numbers in all of our payments were made.
And I took those confirmation numbers and called the IRS and then credited both levels that was below ten thousand. It's actually nine thousand and something and with penalties, it's ten thousand seven hundred.
Would you call any other confirmation numbers from the progressive quarters?
I will, then the other quarters, I didn't go through all of the quarters, uh.
Because they all will pay there.
Well, I'm going by what we have, interest starts in two weeks.
Well, I understand they all have to pay, and I have the documentation to prove that they all have to pay, put the confirmation numbers in the checks and the bank statements to show that they have been paid.
Well, in March, what?
Mayor, I think, uh, one of the, one of the, that we brought the, uh, the statement last week to landlord and cover debt and applies, uh, uh, paying, uh, in order to avoid penalty, that's part of the scope of, of, of what they're doing, because we're, we're doing that pretty soon. Uh, and fuss is controlling out here, but, uh, I, I'm not sure if it works, uh.
So basically, if we pay it, and then what kind of beginning of like?
We did brief, the part that I paid when we paid one hundred thirty-five thousand, we had done it up there that following Tuesday just to, because the interest is compounded daily and just to ensure that we get, have any remainder. And we've gotten small checks back for those overdue for those few days.
What I'm saying is, if you be independent, do you get about that?
Right, yes.
And I just want to note that this various date to the statement was printed October sixth, twenty twenty-five. So that's, that's a big thing for me that they just sent this notice this month. So if we end up overpaying, landlord's going to find it, you're going to market, but as of right now, we don't, we owe money. So I think it would do the city any good to, to accrue interest, although we already accrued, are ridiculously not interesting, that's why landlord is so important to get to the bottom of what is going on, if the IRS doesn't have money. But with the date of October sixth, twenty twenty-five, they're saying they owe the money, so.
So.
I think that would be the best interest of the city to pay it so we don't start accruing interest. And then landlord do their thing to go through all the files and if they find a discrepancy, like discrepancy, then we have that documentation in one.
That's what I'm saying, since they have it, and somebody, we have it, they do it, they do it.
Exactly, I just wanted to point out the statement date that was that, it's right in front of, right in front of us. But I think the number also shows that there's a lot of, uh, council meeting deals in two, twenty twenty-five, so.
I didn't see that anywhere on.
Okay, yeah, and we're aware of that, we're aware of what's going on there in the region.
So it's not just twenty twenty-four. Well, I didn't, I didn't, uh, let's just, let's just be transparent about the numbers, it says two hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. And that was the fees, keys to twenty twenty-five, and if we approve the check for over three hundred and six thousand, hundred and six thousand dollars, we would be there. That was around that time, right?
Yeah.
And then we have another one here from October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and that shows ninety-three dollars and sixty-six cents for grand total. It's saying this year we are going to pay one three hundred forty-three dollars and fifty more cents. So are we paying that as well today? Okay, we can wrap that up and get that straight for that.
Yeah, that's, that's, the reason that it's up for you, that's previous year, uh, so this is that two thousand twenty-four, so we don't have those money for the budget. So, yeah, so the current is, is a part of looking at as well, but make sure that, that, that's all correction. Uh, part of the landlord's trouble to, 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 to look at and verify, provide some support, it's also to make sure that it's correct going forward, so. Uh, but, but, yeah, the issue, the reason why it's up for you, uh, at the amount that's previous year.
There are, certainly you are right, there is a couple. Or they should go on the back and say four hundred and two dollars and thirty-seven cents, but the big one, so a possibility of like in twenty twenty-five, three hundred and forty-three, four hundred and three two, that was in twenty twenty-four, it's under two. So the big one is the ten thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars and fifty more cents. I don't understand if you're paying at this time personally.
They have come from two thousand twenty-one, that's not probably that they have, but.
It's a thousand dollars.
Right, they did, uh, two thousand twenty-four, they did add that, but it would be all of it, you could see that all the time.
You mean on the hundred and thirty-five thousand?
No, I'm saying it's ten thousand, right now. You have one, it's like one of the, I'd say, a scale, a little bit, a lot, two thousand twenty-four, if it's here. It is five hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents, I mean, pay that, still have to pay interest. That's it, that's going to be nine to two today.
Right.
If we don't pay it, prefer to pay it with penalty, then it's going to be paid. If they have to pay penalty for interest, until it reaches twenty-five percent of the tax. If you just pay the tax, if you don't pay the interest, hopefully you're getting the money. So if you lose, I just as quickly as possible.
Um, just saying that, yeah, that's five hundred sixty.
I know what, what you're saying, there are the top two there on that.
Right, uh, families had, uh, so, I'm sorry, did I talk about twenty dollars on the top?
No, it's showing that there is an amount due of five sixty-two eighty-six for the third quarter of twenty-four. And an amount due of five seventy-five seventeen for the fourth portion. And then it shows an interest charge for both of those, so if we could add those to this, if we could get previous years to find out.
If, 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 so it's to get.
Right.
But then that second one goes from, it goes into?
That is the first quarter this year, the second one, so it's just the first.
That's the first one.
The five sixty-two eighty-six, one, twenty-one.
Yeah.
That's just, I mean, people who use this to get the exact error, I mean, the ten, seventeen, five, that's just, this is.
I'm sorry, I, what did you say, I'm sorry, I'm gonna give this.
I understand that the bottom one is on the front, but the other stuff is just, interest, it's interesting, it adds up to the business. I don't see need to pay more than ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-five, I mean, you can get weaker amounts to go, and I don't pay like a twenty-seven to the lower one.
Oh, so that's just the breakdown of that.
Yeah, it's the breakdown of interest, they got to take it down. So you had a ten, four, six, seven, so you know, it's, uh, four, three, two, four, three, seven. It comes out to the ten, seven, two, five, four, six.
Either way, the, the number is not that much, five hundred and sixty-two, I is, you know, a lot of people.
I think Mark's saying that that was already, correct?
Is that, uh, Nick walked up and he said, uh, you know?
Yeah, that's right.
That's, you know, the back.
That's.
Five four, so we get that, that, that. This is just a little bit of late, it's been a long, that. We have that number, that, this number, that number.
That's what that's.
And then he goes to say, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure. Oh, it's okay, it's okay. It's just, yeah, Mike, like, sort of, these are all the codes of interest. That's what it says to go to this day, uh, if you get this number, this number of interest, to that number, you get that number.
And Scott, you, you boy, that's five dollars.
So it's interest group, that's not, that's interest on this one.
Okay, yeah, that's not us behind, that's the interest on this. From the previous year.
Four looks good, luckily it dropped from making the result.
Just, uh, very good one. Any further discussion?
I really understand what you're saying, a lot of it's in this one percent, but I just want you all to know that there are complications and things that may.
I understand.
And I'm willing to, the council saying that if the IRS does say we vote and we have money, that means we refund it for our credit, and that's great. To stop it, to stop all the continuing interest, I can calm down, I get all of that. But I also want the council to be completely understandable that I do have all of the payments in the confirmation letter to care for the payments that's made for this year, or for the year twenty twenty-four. I made twenty-six payments and I have confirmation letters in the.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to give a little piece of?
We don't have to have a roll call. I don't agree.
That's what I think that it's clear, that it's important.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, so it's, okay, it passed.
Yeah, I know a lot of cities, they, they'll do, I mean, an old call on everything, but it's a resolution or others, organs, just for transparency, just for future reference. If that's something that council wants to go to toward the new direction because the soundings, they'll be absolutely terrible. So I mean, that's something that I would pick at as well, going, it's a gamble, yes or no.
Okay, this is Resolution Number 2025-53. It did pass unanimously. Last item on the agenda is the expansion of the, our amendment of the Stolen Services for Landmark, uh, County. Do I hear a motion to approve? Got a motion by MC, do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica, and any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know what's this for.
Sure, so with the Metta Landmark, uh, on Friday, uh, Mr. General, we talked about engaging them. Uh, we talked about the Great Park Procedures, which is where they investigated the, the service scope from 4 of, of, on it. Uh, it started out with, uh, more general scope looking at, uh, some payroll issues and they continued to network. As they got into it, uh, we had this meeting to kind of narrowly focus what the, uh, what the scope would be as outlined on the today. So the last, very last page has the, uh, uh, specifics of what they're going to be, uh, what he had in, in, uh, reporting on. Uh, a number of these items, payroll have already gone. Uh, they are, uh, quite, quite a few. Uh, others are some areas that continue to, to, to look at, uh, but it's, uh, it's outlined there in today. We'll say that Mr. Reagan is there too as well, uh, and, uh, they were like, kind of recommendations as, as well to, for, uh, for this government.
What, what, now he said, what, when you need to report to some sort of, I know there's some, I have no idea that that needs to be delivered for a while now.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, perhaps in one area, uh, if what, what the issues are facing is that the shutdown, uh, some of the, the IRS hasn't found it until the shutdown is over. Uh, but notwithstanding that, uh, we're going to have that pretty soon. But there is a recording that's on there essentially, uh, you know, they're planning on having, uh, the, the Great Park Procedures, uh, play the money, but in the year, uh, and, uh, so we'll have it for, at that time. So to, where we are right now, it's.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussions?
So we're looking at, it's at the, it's at the beginning of the year, 34. So, you know, probably our first, like, first session maybe, I don't know. I guess I would sort of go multiple return on.
I would say that that should be, uh, evident, say 26. On the bottom.
Sorry, there, follow.
On the bottom of the timeline, January 15th, 25.
Oh, I didn't notice that. Yeah, you're right.
So they need to, that's what happened.
That's on there, uh, that's on there, engagement, uh, so, yeah, we'll, we'll do that correctly.
That, that doesn't amend the actual resolution, it's just, it's a bit, it's, uh, it's a bit incorrect.
Yeah, that's a good catch, I'm sure that gets changed, yeah, but that should be within January 15th, 2026.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise a hand. So there we go, we got unanimously, thank you. And, uh, anything, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, I thank you all.